Good evening, everyone. It's seven o'clock. I'm calling this regular meeting of the Armada Township Planning Commission to order. If we could all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to do the public for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all for joining us. Can we have a roll call, Chris?
Abercrombie.
Here.
Arnold.
Here.
Finn.
Here.
No Jabara. Carig.
Here.
No Kuchi Murray.
Here.
Ann Martin.
Ann, Chris, thank you very much for helping us out.
Thank you.
Next is the, to approve the agenda. If there are no amendments.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda. I'll second that.
Okay. Beth and Maureen, all in favor to approve the agenda as presented, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion carries. Next, we have a couple sets of minutes. We have our minutes from our last meeting, our regular planning commission meeting, and as they are printed, we do have a correction to make. Is that correct, Chris?
Yes, yes.
Under the Trillium Farm, the motion needs to be corrected. You can probably help me out a little bit with this, Chris. I've got a copy that's shown in red.
So originally, the motion read, motion by Abercrombie, second by Jabara, to table until we have a completed site plan and everything is addressed by the Road Commission, Public Works, engineer detailed list of every specification. When I went back and re-listened to that motion, Joe Kuchi said engineer detailed list of every specification, but he did not intend that to be part of the motion. It was, he was saying, well, shouldn't we be giving her a detailed list of what she needs? So my, I propose changing that motion to read, motion by Abercrombie, second by Jabara, to table until we have a completed site plan and everything is addressed by the Road Commission and Public Works for engineering items.
And engineering items.
For engineering items.
Okay. Any questions, everyone? Clear on that correction? Okay. All in favor of that correction, aye.
Aye.
Any other corrections to the minutes?
Did we actually have a motion and a second on that?
We need a motion to. I'll make a motion.
Two amends.
Two.
Well, okay.
Okay, how do you?
Are there any other corrections? If not, then go ahead.
I'll make a motion to approve and file amended minutes for the October 2nd, 2024 minutes as presented.
I'll second that.
Sarah? Okay, all in favor of approving the corrective minutes for October 2nd, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. And then next, we did have a workshop. It was not an official meeting. We did not have a quorum. We did not make any decisions, but we did post it and livestream it, and we took some basic minutes just to show what we had discussed. So, everybody got a copy of those?
I'll make a motion to approve and file the workshop minutes for the October 2024 workshop. I'll second.
Okay, Sarah. All in favor of approving the minutes from the planning workshop of October 16th, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Thank you. So, just pass those down to Chris. Okay, so next is our first public comment period. We do have one just before adjournment, but if you have any public comments, just come on up to the podium so we can hear you and state your name and whatever's on your mind. Easy crowd tonight. Okay, seen no public comments. We will move on to our reports and correspondence. Okay, we have a project status report as of.
There is an error on this copy. It should read October.
As of October.
What was posted online does say October.
Okay. So, no update on the Blake's traffic study? Let me just get this a little quieter. Okay. Trillium Farm wedding, they do have an updated site plan, and they're at the meeting tonight as well as on the agenda, and we have letters from the Road Commission and Public Works that are provided. Hidden River Estates, the escrow and insurance are provided, no additional actions required until road improvements start. Hidden River is at 33 and Powell.
And they have pulled their first permit for a house.
They have, okay. How many years later?
It's been a hot minute.
Broken ground. Nineteen ninety-four, ninety-five, nineteen ninety.
It's in a few minutes. Latham Development at Powell Road, the applicant has been notified that the site plan has been extended for one more year. No update on De Hunt Storage on 33 Mile. Miller Farm on Romeo Plank, no update for this meeting. Frontier Farm Market, no update. SEMCO Utility Building, Irwin Road, all requirements met, so I imagine they're, they've started pulling permits or anything.
Yeah.
Okay. Armada Center Property Storage is, feasibility study was provided to us and is on our agenda this evening. Commission projects, we of course are working through our zoning ordinance updates, and we specifically are going to be working on our value-added ag and our special overlay districts this evening. Boo Boo's Barnyard has Court of Appeals to deny reconsideration. That case is now closed, so we can probably take that one off of our.
I believe they're taking it to the Supreme Court.
Yes, they are.
Supreme Court, well, leave it on the, leave it on the thing. And Larry's Park Lot, no response. Applicant will need to submit county permits. Project is closed, and most likely it's not going to be pursued as far as we know, right?
Correct. They would have to get reapprovals on everything if they were to.
Our master plan, of course, is now closed and official and on the books, and we're closing also the seasonal property and workers clause. That will probably be captured in the audit of our zoning ordinance as we are going through our entire ordinance with our new planner. It'll be gone through from top to bottom. Also, we have, Elmont Township is working on their master plan, and they are, we don't have a copy for public yet, but it is available for the planning commission review. Is that the status as of now?
They only sent a hard copy. There is no link available.
Okay.
So if someone on the commission wants to see it, there's a copy in the planning office.
Okay. We have a letter from Foster Swift Attorneys. This is regarding the Michigan Public Service Commission interpretation of PA 233. They're saying that municipalities across Michigan are encouraged to join the legal appeal that they are filing in Michigan court. I see now that MTA also has sample ordinance language for these public service renewable energy properties, so I imagine when we get through some of these other things, we'll be taking another look at that ordinance. Does that sound about right, Chris? Adam?
You know, this is a moving target with this legislation.
Right.
It'll be interesting to see where this appeal that many municipalities are joining in, where that goes. Yes, MTA did release a sample CREEO, compatible renewable energy ordinance.
Mm-huh.
But there are a number of different regulatory options that communities have, including doing nothing. The state effectively took over control for siting and permitting effective the end of this month, whether we like it or not. I guess I don't know what the town, if the township, you know, considered at all preparing a workable ordinance in the hopes that maybe developers would want to come and work through our process instead of going straight to the state. So there are options on the table, but, you know, to be honest, even doing nothing at this point and kind of waiting and seeing is an okay approach. And especially given the question marks and the gray area in this law and how it will be interpreted.
Well, the inaction is the good action at this point.
And they talked about it.
Right. I had provided the, those drafts in the July or August packet, I think, and you guys decided to just hold off and deal with them as part of the overall ordinance update. This document was more just to let the commission know that Foster Swift has filed a lawsuit, and they're encouraging townships to sign onto the lawsuit. So that, a copy of this has been provided to the township board who would make those kinds of decisions, so.
Good FYI. Also, on the table this evening was the beginning of a site plan for Aket's Handmade Pie on North Avenue. They'd like to build a pavilion with a few picnic tables for customers to sit and relax and enjoy the scenic area with a counter built on one side for setting lunch items on. And this is just for informational purposes, but also as part of that, I did receive a response from Kevin Canal, the fire marshal. I asked him if there would be necessary to have a fire safety review for this property since it's an open pavilion on an existing site, and he came back with, that he confirmed through site visit that we do not need to do a fire department review for this particular project. I also touched base with the property owner to confirm use of pavilion. Thanks for reaching out. So that's, we'll be seeing that on a future agenda, so it's a heads up. And you probably just had a glancing look at this, Adam's just going to go through a full review from this point.
And I talked to Chris about this as well. It's my understanding that ten, fifteen years ago, maybe, there was a fully engineered site plan that was approved for this use in the, when it was initially approved. So, you know, with that in mind, looking at the scope of this project being a pavilion, you know, limited improvements here on an existing developed site, I, Chris and I kind of talked about what should be included on this site plan for your review. In some sense, we kind of can treat this as an amendment to the original approval, essentially adding this pavilion. So I think a lot of what they are providing here is information that's relevant to this particular use, and additional information like grading around the remainder of the site and, you know, utilities and things of that nature, you know, were covered as when it was originally approved, and we wouldn't necessarily see those as pertinent items for this review, so. You know, it may be something that if you're looking for something in particular or based on your better understanding of this site, whether you're looking for screening, maybe now's a good opportunity to, or at least maybe convey that to staff so that they can convey it to the applicant, not during tonight's meeting, but, you know, offline. If there's anything else that ought to be seen on this plan, that would help inform your review when it is officially on your agenda.
Okay.
Maybe something you can convey to your staff.
Do you, do you, would you see a copy of the fire marshals?
That just came in this morning. That'll be in the packet when, yeah, because I just printed it up to them this morning.
Okay.
Any other questions on that?
So DJ, one thing that you had mentioned to me specifically was that the site plan portion of this is not showing the ditch that goes down between their property.
Doesn't show the fence.
The fence and the ditch.
The fence should definitely be on exit, because that's, that was not on the original site plan, so that should be on this update. So in this case, we just kind of take the original site plan and this one as the basis for the review?
Yeah, and I would even suggest maybe in the packet that's provided to you when this is back on your agenda or officially on your agenda, maybe it should include a courtesy copy of the original approved. That could be a good handy reference for some of the other details in case other questions arise. But yeah, anything like a fence that wasn't part of the original approval should be included on here as well.
Okay. Any other reports or correspondence?
I hope that there was one more thing on here.
I missed something.
Michigan Township Association, MTA webinar or something.
Oh, the insight.
Yeah.
Was this just provided for some basic information of what's available through the MTA?
Oh, I don't have that in my copy.
Yeah.
Joe saw that and added it.
Okay. I thought he was pointing out something to me, but if everybody's got it, so that it's just kind of showing you what the MTA always has available, webinars and things, there's some different ones, like cannabis and other topics, so if anyone's interested. Yep. So that's there for your information. Any other reports, correspondence?
I'll make a motion to receive and file reports, reports and correspondence with the corrections on the headings for the project status report.
I'll support that.
Okay, Beth, Sarah, all in favor of receiving and filing the reports and correspondence, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Okay, so now we're up to our unfinished business, and since we've been at this for a while, we've got our ag, SAA zoning ordinance on the agenda as our first item. As I said, it was Joe, Beth, our planner, myself, well, the planner was remote, but we met and had a workshop to do a little brainstorming to help move this along, and Adam has done some updates to our existing ordinance and brought some new language, so I'm going to let him kind of take the ball with that, and, are you ready to go, Adam?
I'm ready.
All right. And our copies are not in color, so make sure you don't miss anything.
Aha.
I tried to catch them all, so.
Yep. So the color version would be helpful for reference, but I can kind of go through this together with you. So what we have now is a third draft of proposed amendments, and, yeah, so this third draft shows all proposed changes from the original or from the currently adopted ordinance version. And so you can see through the strike through and the red font method, you can see what's proposed to be deleted and what's proposed to be added. And I'll just kind of go page by page, maybe, and then you can stop me on a particular page.
Okay.
So on page one of eleven of these proposed amendments, so we're within the section 8.01, this is the uses permitted, principal permitted uses within the AG Agricultural Preservation District. So we're dealing with agribusinesses or value-added farming operations. So initially on this first page, the changes largely are getting rid of the term ancillary and replacing it with accessory. Aside from that, a couple of tweaks or proposed sentences to be eliminated from the intent statement.
Just not necessary?
Right.
Right.
Yeah.
Any, anybody good on that? Okay. That was page one.
So on page two, so we're in the section, again, under agribusiness as a principal permitted use within the AG district, and we list acceptable agribusiness uses essentially, acceptable accessory uses. So these are uses, the listing here of what could be allowed. And so you'll see we made some tweaks under item subsection B, cider mills and wineries were expanding to say cider mills, wineries, or breweries. Under subsection F, we're just clarifying small-scale entertainment as defined in section 20.01. So that was actually a recent amendment or a fairly recent amendment, maybe a couple few years ago.
Right.
That, where we came up with a definition for small-scale entertainment. If you recall, it was a capacity of not more than 200 persons.
Should that be just put right in there to keep them from having to refer back to 2001?
Well, we could. You run the risk of having redundant language if you make a change to the definition, and we forget to make the change in this section could cause a problem, so my thought was, well, I specifically refer the reader to that particular definition, and hopefully that will prompt them to, oh, there's a definition for that, so I should go and check it out. And so that was kind of the thought there.
All right, with everybody, or?
I just, I prefer it to be in there.
And we can, that's okay.
I mean, I'm only one person. I just.
I don't think it's a bad idea myself, just to have the 200 persons, because, I mean, how much more information is in there? It talks about the hours.
In the definition?
Yeah.
Well, there's a lot in that definition.
So.
You know, in one sense, since you have it defined, and the definition covers more than just the number of persons, we'd run the risk of, well, why did you just restate the maximum occupancy but not also restate the hours of operation and all of that?
That's why I think that.
It weakens it.
This is a better way to go, right?
Way to do it, yeah.
Okay, I guess not that. We lose.
Okay.
So, wow, I don't know. At the, at the end of this ordinance?
Where all of our definitions are kept in one location at the end of the ordinance. It's kind of the nature of zoning.
Yeah.
And it's tough to do. We have these definitions, and we refer to them, the terms that are defined in Article 20 are referenced throughout the ordinance, and in many cases, they're, you know, we're not even calling out that there is a definition. At least here, we're calling out that there is a specific definition.
That's true.
Yeah, that's good.
I just, I'd like to make it as user-friendly as possible, and rather than trying to find section 20, 01, and somewhere.
See, to me, this is more user-friendly, because it's not bogging me down with six more paragraphs.
It is nice that you did add that, so they know there's a definition.
That is very helpful. I will say that. I just.
Okay.
Some tweak to subsection I, where currently it reads kitchen facilities along with the sale of cider, donuts, fruit. We're proposing to revise that to refer to our new term, seasonal kitchen facilities as defined in section 20.01. So if you wanted to quickly look at that proposed definition on page 11 for seasonal kitchen facility. So what do we mean by seasonal kitchen facility? Because that was part of the, you know, we needed clarification there. Well, clearly, it's seasonal, right? So that's one aspect of it. So we're saying the offering of food at retail on an occasional or seasonal basis as an adjunct service on the premises in connection with the operation of wineries, cider mills, breweries, distilleries, civic events, private events, and/or agribusinesses. The food offered may consist of snacks, sandwiches, luncheons, prepackaged or pre-arranged dinners. Alcoholic beverages may be served, provided the responsible energy is licensed to do so. A seasonal kitchen shall not include the operation of a standard open front takeout or drive-through restaurant. That's important to clarify what it isn't. But could include the purchase of warmed-up non-cooking process or prepackaged products like charcuterie board, peanuts, cracker and cheese trays, and other similar items. We're trying to capture this limited kitchen, seasonal kitchen use that distinguishes it from a standard year-round, full-service, full-kitchen restaurant.
Any thoughts? My only thought, and it doesn't have anything to do with the language, but looking at, going back to the first, on the small-scale entertainment, seeing that definition, and then what we're looking at now with seasonal kitchen, and then going back and seeing that definition. If you put those definitions in each one of these subsections, this is going to be a very cumbersome document, and people looking for things are going to look at it and go, what the heck? Is my opinion.
Yeah.
And but having the definitions at the back, easily accessible, showing that there is a definition, to me makes things a lot more user-friendly than having a bunch of, that's just my opinion.
Well, maybe add along the page number. Section 201 on page.
And if it's, well, if it's online, that would be a hyperlink, couldn't it?
Yeah, in the newly designed version, it will be a hyperlink.
That's great.
Until that happens, it's going to be an amendment that's sitting somewhere.
Somewhere. Yeah.
Yeah, so I forgot about that, that you are going to be working toward a better version that allows for quick navigation within the document. So hopefully that, coupled with the specific reference to that definition, which is in section 20.01, hopefully should suffice.
Yes, that's welcome.
Okay. Further down on page two, so now we're talking about the minimum site requirements for these types of accessory agribusiness uses. We do have, and I think this is carried over in a few places, where, you know, when we're talking about what needs to be submitted on a site plan for review by the planning commission for any of these, and what are some minimum requirements for properties where currently the ordinance says that you need to have at least 10 acres in size, you need to have setbacks of 100 feet. We're just giving, adding in some flexibility for the planning commission to modify the above minimum site requirements based on the following findings of fact, and so we're giving you reasons why you could potentially, say, allow for a 9.5 acre site to have one of these operations.
Okay.
You love wiggle room, Beth.
I do like wiggle room. I want black and white, and this is it. Give me variance or, I don't agree with.
But then again, it's a commission decision, majority vote, and then whether it moves forward or not. So, I mean, everybody has opinions.
Right, but then one person comes up and, oh, okay, you got nine and a half acres, that's fine. The next person comes up.
Oh, you have nine three-quarters, no.
You have different people on the commission, and then, no, no.
We do provide, in order to eliminate the arbitrariness, if that's a word, of your decision, that's why we do provide two reasons that you would utilize in order to come up with that decision.
Yeah, so it's not just going to be an arbitrary, or I don't like you, so no, or you're my best friend, so yeah. I mean, that's.
It would be a case where they're backed up to a power easement or something where it creates a buffer that that's coming into play a lot of times. Every site will be different, but if you've got something like that, it's a natural buffer between a property that can make the difference of being short a half acre or something.
And I don't.
That's why we have a zoning board of appeals for variances.
I still think it's good that the planning commission does have some leeway, because a lot of times when you see these sites, they have very specific things that apply only to that site, and it's nice to be able to help a person, an applicant out when they have these type of situations where it's minor, it's not a ZBA decision.
Once again, I just feel this planning commission is not always going to be the same planning commission. I mean, we come and we go.
Right.
And I just, I don't agree with that.
But we have to remember that we are here to serve the community. Whoever is on this commission is here to serve the community.
That's right, but you still have.
Well, you have boundaries, and you have that.
Discretion.
Yeah, you have discretion, but it's, you know.
Thinking, I'll have discretion. We're going to have to agree to disagree.
Okay, well, we know what Beth's opinion is. With the rest of the commission, they feel that, see, having that ability to modify the minimum requirements based on these two proposed uses, that's something we want to see in the ordinance?
I think it's acceptable.
I like it, I think it's.
I do, too. I think it's.
Okay. We'll go with majority, and of course, this is, and this is only the draft. We're still going to see this probably again with the full commission in the final.
Page three, just a couple of small changes were in the setbacks, item four, with regard to the rear yard, striking the, a minimum 50-foot setback and simply referring to the, as required in that particular. Item four, with regard to the rear yard, striking the, a minimum fifty foot setback and simply referring to the, as required in that particular zoning district.
So that, that's a good thing, where you say, where you change something that you don't have to change it everywhere, it's already referred to as.
Yep. Uh, also clarifying under there, when we were talking about setbacks, uh, existing buildings being utilized for storage, single-family dwellings. Or production farming activities are not subject to the above noted setback requirement. So we are just talking about the, the buildings associated with that. Accessory agribusness use, and not existing buildings that are already exist, you know, on site. Uh, throughout, there's minor cleanup of like spelling out two thousand five hundred as opposed to just the number um that is sometimes helpful is. Just.
So a lot of detail about parking.
Yep. Page four. So one of the significant changes here, or proposed additions, is a, within. Still within the agricultural preservation district, but as a special approval use. So this had to come before the planning commission af- af- after a public hearing and with the plan, of course, as well, uh, event barns. But we will require minimum standards or special approval use standards. And so the way that the ordinance is set up is that uh, we don't list the standards within that. That section eight point oh two, but we refer to Article sixteen, where all of our special land use standards are, are contained. And so we refer to section sixteen point four six. So if you wanna skip ahead while we're on this event barn. Um, you can go to page, well, first let's go to page eleven, I'm sorry, ten, and look at the definition for event barn. So this is a proposed new definition, the bottom definition on page ten. This is a barn associated with and on the same property as a bona fide agricultural operation that is used for the hosting of private events. Event barns may or may not include kitchen facilities, outdoor gardens and recreation, reception facilities. And or the sale of alcoholic beverages for on-premise consumption only during scheduled events and not open to the general public. So that's the definition of an event barn.
And so they have in their private events, so you.
Private events.
It's a very, you know, who's gonna come, what kind of numbers we're looking at, okay.
And now the requirements for event barns as a special land use are on page nine. So a new section sixteen point four six. So again, it reiterates, event barns may be printed, permitted as a special approval land use in the AG district, subject to the following conditions. First, we have operational requirements, so these are items that we discussed. Um, only existing farm buildings may be utilized for events authorized under this section. So this is not intended to allow somebody to build a new building. Uh, or a new barn here. We're, we're talking about existing uh farm buildings that can be used for special events. Uh, a capacity of not exceeding two hundred and fifty persons. Hours of operation between, uh, not conducted between eleven PM and eight AM. Uh, specifically stating that seasonal kitchen facilities, as defined in section twenty point oh one, may be operated during, during events.
This is all in.
And this, this is, a lot of this language here, yeah, I'm sorry.
This is all in the agricultural district as opposed to what we're.
Correct. So we're not talking about the S, SAA overlay, we're talking about allowing event barns as a special use in the agricultural district.
So this is all new language.
Yeah. But really subsections B and C for the remainder are, kind of mirrored the similar language that we have for. The other agribusness events that are allowed in the AG district, the parking, um. Pedestrian circulation, things of that nature. So really the specific requirements for this. This specific use of event barns would be the operational requirements, one through four.
And the, the thought here, that we came up with special land use, you can have a, additional requirements. It does go to a public hearing.
Yes.
It is just a recommendation from the planning commission to the township board, who has the final say.
Yes.
Rather than just a permitted use.
Yeah.
Cause we, we, they do have to have some oversight on, on these, otherwise they.
Yeah, that's essentially what we're saying here, is that these event barns, although we, we believe that they. May still be appropriate in the agricultural district and don't have to go through the SAA overlay process. We think it, it could be a little bit more intensive than some of the other ones that are just permitted in the AG district. And therefore, we have these standards listed and you have the ability after a public hearing to attach conditions and recommend, make a recommendation to the township board. So you're just giving yourself additional controls here, uh, to regulate this potentially um more significant use.
Uh, in, in the case that someone did wanna do something that they were not able to meet this, let's say they wanted to put up a new building. You know, with the character of a, an existing building, and they, and it was a better, safer route to go. Um, what would their, um, would they be, would that be a ZBA decision?
That is one option. They could ask for a variance from that provision A one. Or they could consider um going to the SAA overlay and call it a event hosting facility, which could be. Uh, and there is no restriction on the use of existing structures, I believe, right? Or is it, I'm sorry, um. Yeah, correct.
Right, can be newer, newer existing.
Yeah. If they can't comply, then in the ZBA isn't, doesn't approve the variance, because there's no hardship or practical difficulty. Then they just have to go onto the SAA overlay.
Also, I'm kinda opening, you know, obviously Beth and I were at the workshop, but um, the rest of the commission. Um, how do you feel about these um requirements? Any thoughts or suggestions or?
I think it makes sense, and I think it's good to have um options available in case, you know, something isn't able to be met that there are. Options available for the people to go to and say, well, can I do it this way, or can I do it that way? And you have, rather than just either, you know, yeah, or they wing it and get into trouble, or, you know, I mean, it's.
So this is for Ag, but Ag di- district, not the SAA overlay.
Yes, we are still.
The Ag district in our township.
Correct.
It, beyond the overlay where Blake's is and the, the crowd around there.
Yes.
This is, empowers the rest of the township. It really empowers the rest of the township to run. Uh, seasonal business, to make some more money from their property.
Mm-hmm.
Without major hoops to jump through.
Correct.
We're assuming that if they wanna do that, and it can be successful, they can have a, a seasonal kitchen or a barn that they host events in. To make more financial money for their, from their property.
Mm-hmm. Yes.
And um, I think that it empowers our community, and I think that that's a good thing. With the parking, we relisted all the five parking things, um, like the rest, for the seasonal kitchen, and then we relisted them. Under the event of the same, but maybe we could consolidate that, that's all in text if, in some way.
Um, yeah.
But I don't know how.
Yeah.
It, the final copy will show, I think.
Yeah, you, you could eliminate B and C and have a cross-reference.
Yeah, something like that.
But then we're kind of, we, we were just in section eight point oh two, I believe, and they kicked us to section sixteen four six. And I would hate to send them back to eight point oh one. So that's kind of why. It's, it's such a balancing act, I think, you know, as we just talked about earlier.
Mm-hmm.
Trying to make this as user-friendly as possible.
Like the outline of it all, yeah.
But this by nature is a complicated regulations that we have for uh, something important that we wanna do for the community.
Thank you.
So what we, we wanted to make sure is that we're striking a good balance on this, because although event barns is an opportunity for. Um, you know, people that have an Ag.
Buildings.
But, you know, you have to make sure that we're not creating a nuisance and that we're, you know, there's a lot of barns in the township. So hopefully this is a good balance between too easy and too hard.
And it's seasonal.
And it's seasonal, which is, yeah.
Not a new business moving in next door all the time.
Correct. It's limited, special events, right.
So residents won't be overwhelmed.
So, um, this looks, this looks good as a, as a special land use under our Ag district.
So we keep saying seasonal. What if the barn is heated and they wanna do a baby shower in the middle of the wind?
Then we're looking at an event center, which is only in the SAA district at, at this point.
So I, I would, let's look at our definition for event barn, our proposed definition. On page ten. Um, nothing in the definition here says seasonal.
True.
Okay.
It simply says hosting of private events.
Scheduled events.
Right.
But it's limited to three days a week.
Um.
Somewhere in here.
Yep, so where was that?
Oh, that's in the other.
Or was that not in? Okay. So we looked in the definition, there's no limitation on the number. It just says private events and scheduled events, right? Um, in section nine, or on page nine, section sixteen point four six.
Oh, that's outdoor events, three day a week.
That's where you mentioned the seasonal kitchen rather than the.
There, there's a limitation on the hours of operation.
Event hosting facilities.
So the definition of.
So no, there's no limitation on the, the number of, of events that you can hold, or whether an event can be held in July or in December.
Okay, so it's not seasonal and it's not limited to three days a week.
It's occasional, it, it's, it's events, right? Scheduled events.
Scheduled events.
But is the kitchen limited, because it says seasonal kitchens under operational requirements?
Well.
But the, but the definition doesn't limit it to eight months a year. That's limited in section eight oh two.
The event barn, language and definition says may or may not include kitchen facilities.
Right. So I, I would say that this, because it refers to seasonal kitchen, that, that also isn't limiting. Even the definition for seasonal kitchen, um, I think it says occasional. I think the word occasional or seasonal is included in the definition.
So you could occasionally do it to your own, basically, based on the seasonal kitchen facility.
Now, as we discussed, because this is a special land use, you will ask the question, when do you plan to operate? How often will you have events? And you have the ability to add conditions of approval.
And neighbors will be notified, as a special land use, and everything would be.
So you could have a reasonable condition, you know, weekends only, or no more than one per week, or the out, you know. Maybe they'll choose to self-limit and say, we're, we're totally fine, we're just doing this during the spring, fall and summer. And so you can add that as a condition of approval.
Okay. Or during a, a ripening season, let's say, blueberries or.
Sounds familiar.
What they, whatever they, their added benefit is.
Right.
Okay, so um.
Okay.
This looks like it would be a pretty workable ordinance. Looks like we.
Okay, so back to page four. So now we have a number of tweaks to the language for several special land use types. That are allowed in the SAA overlay district. So now we're talking about uses that are allowed as a special land use in the SAA overlay district. So these, by nature, are more intensive. Uh, but as we read through these, we, we looked and we saw that maybe we need to have some tweaks in these sections as well, so. Um, the same thing with regard to the u- the rear yard setback, instead of saying fifty feet, we're saying as required in the AG district. Other than that, just a couple of, you know, housekeeping changes. Instead of calling this event and hosting facility, we're just saying event hosting facilities. That matches how it's, it reads in the SAA overlay, as it is anyway.
The maximum number is three hundred guests, as opposed to the two fifty, but it's in the SAA district specifically.
Uh, event hosting facility, where do you see that, three hundred?
Number four.
Number four.
Oh, yeah, on the next page, page five, that's correct. Three hundred is the maximum.
That's okay.
Uh, the other change here is with regard to the traffic study, so we require a traffic study. And we had always, even in the, the current language, allows for an awaiver, a waiver of the traffic study by the township board. Uh, in s- based on uh, where activities level. When a site has an existing use with activity levels at or more intensive than three hundred guests. Well, we strike that because we already limit it to max three hundred, so that doesn't make any sense. And uh, allowing for the planning commission to waive the traffic study is, is better procedurally. Because the planning commission is the one that reviews it at the public hearing, and you're gonna make a recommendation, and it would, wouldn't make sense. How, how would you ask the township board to waive the traffic study if it hasn't gone through the planning commission first? And, and so you just want, the planning commission ought to have that power. And then like we, when we added flexibility, elsewhere, we want to make sure that there's. Uh, standards for why we would waive a traffic study.
Joe, Joe has a question.
Does not cause backup.
Mic muted.
He doesn't show that he's on here, but. Oh, there you are.
Uh, my question for Adam actually, sorry to bother you. Uh, you're stating that the event barns can only be for existing farm buildings.
Correct. Correct.
So, so what if someone puts one up? What's to stop someone from putting one up and changing their name to an event barn?
Yeah, good point.
How does that define, yeah, existing?
Yeah.
I, I've heard if they put one up and don't come in for it.
Couple of years, yeah.
Yep.
Can, can it be a, a barn that, barn that existed prior to the date that this ordinance went into effect?
Yeah, so typically, that's, that's how you would do it. It's a good suggestion. Existing at the, at the time this amending ordinance uh becomes effective. So that would prevent somebody from, you know, next year building a pole barn and the year after applying. That's a great comment.
Anything else, Joe?
Um, no, I'll, I'll wait.
Let me just make a note. Okay, so back to page five. The next use is special outdoor events. Again, this is a special land use in the SAA overlay. We did suggest a new number B three. To require that a, a special outdoor event shall only permit it on sites with frontage on and direct access to a paved roadway.
I don't, I don't think that's right.
In the SAA district, how, uh, is there mostly access to paved roadways? I don't think that there's a lot of.
We, we've got two um parcels that currently have an SAA, and both of them have that, are, are on a paved road, roadway.
What other parcels would be eligible?
Well, and that's, that's part of the, you have to look at all the, the requirements for getting an SAA. Is there, I think there's a minimum uh of. Size parcel, um, and that's the map that Caitlin put together back in June, I think it was. And there were like three hundred parcels that had that much pro- property. And then how many of those were on a paved street? We didn't have a, a count, we would've had to go through and add them up. But it was something less than three hundred, so.
So this is specific for hosting an outdoor event.
Yes.
Has to be on a paved roadway.
And what is the rationale for that, besides already being in the SAA district, so people don't get their cars dirty in the rain or what?
Nuisance dust.
It's also to limit the number of special event venues that you could have throughout the township. Because these are large events and it could be a nuisance if they're.
Well, how frequent are they?
Right. I mean, I know someone that is on a dirt road that hosts events occasionally and.
But that's a private thing.
Correct.
This is SAA, which is intended to be public.
This would be, this would be, so it would be open.
Right, okay, gotcha.
It does say no more than three per week on this outdoor event also.
That's current language? I believe.
Well.
Yes.
The other, the other change is that it was fifty acres and now we see it's down to thirty acres.
Thirty, so they were opening it up even more, but limiting it with the pavement. So.
I mean, this, this are made, we don't have a whole lot of paved roads.
Setback of a hundred feet.
I mean, a lot of small communities don't have a lot of paved roads.
Two hundred feet from off garlic vines.
I think the intent here is that, you know, uh, the, the unpaved roads, if you start bringing a lot of traffic down there, it can really be a nuisance. It's just, it's gonna add.
I mean, it can with the dust, it can also destroy the road. I mean, I lived on a dirt road for a long time, and the more traffic that's on it, the more pitted and everything it gets and gets to be driving like on the moon. Um, and I understand that, I'm just trying to, you know, kind of be devil's advocate that, you know, being in a small farming community, we don't have a lot of paved roads.
A lot of people move on unpaved roads to be.
They rose for a reason.
Because they are quieter than paved roads, and you start throwing events down.
Right. Mm-hmm, oh, no, I, I understand, I'm just.
I don't, I don't think that's a bad, uh, requirement.
Kind of playing both ends of the, thank you.
Okay. Everyone good with that?
On page.
Keeping.
Keeping the pavement.
Keeping it pavement, yeah.
Right.
On page six, still talking about special outdoor events. Um, reducing the setback from two hundred feet to one hundred feet, uh, for the, any designated event hosting area. Uh, but keeping it at two hundred feet if the event is going to feature amplified sounds.
Which isn't much if it's amplified.
Right.
Right. No, but typically, any, um, I mean, there's sound engineers that work to keep the, I mean, you guys know that.
They still have to do, the, uh, decibel level by the, at the property line, it's like their performance standards had to be followed.
Correct.
But I know I've had events that were outside and I've had live entertainment, and there were sound engineers making sure that the sound wasn't being a nuisance to anyone outside of our property.
If, if, you know, if these get out of hand, say someone is approved to do special outdoor events, it just, it becomes what? It becomes an enforcement issue.
Yes.
And then, I mean, the township has the ability to shut them down if it, if this does become a nuisance.
Right, you can revoke the special use permit.
Yeah.
A couple other changes on, still on page six, under the other requirements F, items three and four. Three is related to lighting, just ensuring that the lighting is turned off after the event. And then number four is just explicitly saying that the township board, um, uh, shall limit the duration and intensity of events as appropriate to ensure compatibility with the surrounding air, area and neighborhood. So essentially, kind of forcing the township ultimately to limit the duration and intensity to ensure compatibility.
Adam, on your screen, your document, is that in red?
Yes, number three and four.
And I apologize, I do not know how these got into the packets without the red highlighting being there.
I'm trying to call, I'm trying to call out all the changes, so it's unfortunate that you don't have it in front of you in that, in that way, you know.
Maybe, maybe some brackets or something in case. In the future, no, seriously, in the future.
No, I, I'm certain that it was sent to the printer intending to, to send it to color, and it just didn't get that selection chosen.
Coloring is more expensive too, let's just kinda use some.
It is.
Back, back, uh, back to process.
As, as we go, as we go, you gotta use your crayons and keep up with it.
Is, did I hear you guys say it's thirty, you have to have thirty acres and not be on a dirt road, is that correct?
For outdoor events.
For outdoor.
But this is only, this is under the special overlay district, which there are only two in the township right now.
Where are those two?
Blakes and Miller Farms. This, this ordinance was written specifically, um, for the, uh, the use that came about with the, um, production of the hard cider and the, as part of our master plan, we recognize that the Blakes was an asset to the community to be protected and allow them to do these additional events like the cider, hard cider and things. So now we're, so many years later, we're re- reviewing it again to see if, um, it can be applied elsewhere in the township.
So does, can you, why do you need the thirty acres?
Because special outdoor events are, are larger events that, um, we want to see somebody shoehorned on a ten acre parcel in a mostly residential ag area. That we, you know, the idea is to protect all property owners, the people that own the property as well as the neighbors. And we have to make sure that we don't create a nuisance situation for the surrounding area, so we try and do the best to find that, that balance.
So if you're surrounded by other farms, would that fit into it, or frankly, your neighbors aren't really? Like, if you have a farm next to you, and another farm next to you, would that then?
As, as written, you would have to own thirty acres to do this.
Okay.
It's actually a reduction from the current language, which requires fifty.
Fifty. So we've made it more accessible.
So this, this proposed amendment would, would reduce that. On page seven, we're still dealing with the same use, special outdoor events. But it just mirrors the same language that we talked about, the planning commission ability to mod, to waive a traffic impact study.
It defines it.
Yes, and, and why, and, and under what circumstances would the planning commission consider waiving a traffic impact study?
So the, the two, the two times that the planning commission can, may waive this is if the proposed operation has received approval from a Macomb County Road Commission, based on the current application being reviewed, which we had that, that this evening. And the proposed operation has proposed improvements to adequately manage the anticipated traffic control necessary to not cause backups on the public roadway and off-site impact nuisances to the surrounding area. So in this case, it could be something as simple as they've got a, a large staging area that they can get traffic off the road and maybe even, uh, you know, traffic monitor people to, to get, to help people park and keep, so we don't have backups and. And then, and of course, if the Macomb County Road Commission waves.
Right.
So everybody, everybody's good with those, um, the.
Those reasons.
The planning commission has said to the township board to review the traffic study. Okay.
The, uh, so further on page seven, so now we're talking about section sixteen point four one, so another type of use allowed in the SAA. Currently, it reads manufacture of food and beverages, including the distillation, fermentation, brewing, and related packaging of alcoholic beverages. And so this whole section, um, the only change we're proposing to make is to strike the words food and. Uh, because this whole sec, section is written on the assumption that we're talking about beverages. And so we're just cleaning it up, eliminating any inconsistency.
But we address food and.
And is it only alcoholic beverages or any beverage?
No.
Cause this says related packaging.
Manufacturing of beverages. It can include.
Okay, including the, okay, got it.
Alcohol, but it doesn't have to be limited.
Cause cider is listed in there.
Right, and that's why I wanted to make sure it wasn't exclusive of alcoholic beverages.
Can you guys go back to though, I'm still confused on how it went from like a hundred acres to thirty acres, how did you guys decide?
It went from fifty to, to thirty.
Fifty, what started at a hundred, how, how does that get decided? Like, how does the requirement stand lower?
Well, we're proposing a change, uh, tonight, so we're deciding that this evening, so.
That's kind of why, like, there's other farms that are surrounded by other areas, that ten acres is a lot of property. And if you're having, you know, it was already redone down to thirty, why can't it go down to ten?
No, it wasn't already down to thirty, so the, the currently adopted language, which has been on the books for how many years?
It's currently, it is currently fifty.
It's fifty.
It's currently fifty and trying to go down to thirty?
Correct.
Correct.
We made it more accessible for homo, for people interested in the SAA district, very specifically, to, to use it. By reducing.
And if I, like, for ten, I mean, seems reasonable as well, if it's on a paved road and you're not surrounded by a ton of neighbors.
I think people would disagree with that. There's a lot of ten acre parcels out there, uh, and those are.
It's like, we want it for the community to, if you're seeing it's profitable for businesses, that you have an agriculture that can only work it sometimes
Well, if someone.
and where you could have like a hidden event in the back, that nobody would even really.
Well, I think you'd have a hard time hiding something on ten acres.
With three hundred people.
Yeah, it's.
So.
It's better to err on this side, I mean, this is, you know, thirty acres is, is a decent sized parcel, it isn't even a particularly large parcel. And to have a special event on there that it could attract hundreds of people, I'm sure the neighbors would not appreciate that on a ten acre parcel.
Well, then I have a piece of property that busts up into a school, and busts up into apples, and busts up into nothing else other than baseball fields. So tell me how that would affect, like you said, that's very easy to have, and it's ten acres.
So there's always unique circumstances.
And, and this, this is just for, for bona fide farms, this isn't just for people to say.
It is a farm.
Right.
It's an orchard.
It's an orchard.
Correct. But that's what I'm, I did it, I'm just asking why, like, it's a church you're making.
Well, so, one of the reasons, just to answer your question, um, we try and make rules for the township as a whole. Absolutely, there may be exceptions, or maybe a ten acre parcel that is surrounded by hundred acre parcels agricultural use. And, yeah, you'd say that, that, in that particular circumstance, maybe it would be okay. That's what the ZBA is for, right? Or that's, if we get multiple requests and we, we decide to go down from thirty even further, we can always amend the ordinance later on. Uh, we're taking a conservative approach, which would apply throughout the community, and so we would definitely not want to start with ten. You can't go back up once we kind of go down to ten.
Exactly, I agree.
So we're trying to, on average, or in general, a ten acre is more likely to be surrounded by residential uses. And a thirty acre, you have more, more buffer in there, so that's kind of the problem.
And it is, it is a substantial reduction from fifty to thirty already.
It's.
But, like I said.
What is that, fifty to thirty, that's twenty, so if you get another twenty, it would be ten, but I don't, right, like, I don't get the.
You got a real hard sell here. That's, I mean, our, our job is to protect all the residents, and, um, I think that would be derelict for us to go all the way down to, to ten acres. There will be exceptions, and that's, like I said, the ZBA. The, the, you could, be the perfect situation of this, like, like the planner stated. It's, uh, surrounded by, you know, what's not gonna affect anybody, then you can get a variance. But to just say every ten acre parcel can do this, I wouldn't want to be sitting up here and say that.
We wouldn't be protecting.
I think it'd attack the hall with people complaining if you had these on ten acre parcels. So, appreciate your, appreciate your opinion, but I don't think it's gonna work, so.
Also, the larger parcels at, in point, they could possibly want to subdivide. So you would have all those people in the larger parcel next to this ten acre parcel that has these events going on, so. I mean, that's always a possibility too, that's something that you do have to think about.
And then the last one is, uh, page eight, so the last use where we're looking at some tweaks is the year-round kitchens with seating areas slash tasting rooms. So again, this is all currently allowed on the books for SAA overlay. And the way that it reads is it says, the current language says, under A, a winery, cider mill, microbrewery, or distillery may offer food service subject to the following conditions. So it's, uh, what we had discovered is that, well, what if it's, you know, a, an agricultural operation that's producing food, not, not a winery, not drinks in this case, winery, cider mill, or microbrewery and distillery? That we want to really open this up for a bona fide agricultural operation, including but not limited to wineries, cider mills, microbreweries, and distilleries, may offer food service subject to the following conditions. So if it's a, you know, whatever, fruit or something like that, you can sell pies, uh, in your year-round kitchen, right? It wouldn't prevent you, it wouldn't force you to go get a, you know, start distilling or brewing in order to get your year-round kitchen. So aside from that change, just some minor tweaks, again with the setback, rear yard, changing it from fifty feet to as required in the AEG district.
But number four is, is a change.
Number four, so clearing that up there, um, it says any alcoholic beverages sold at retail, the, the, the currently adopted language says any alcoholic beverages sold at retail at the winery, cider mill, microbrewery, brewery, or distillery must be produced by the applicant. Uh, we're clarifying this, that alcoholic beverages sold at retail at any winery, cider mill, microbrewery, or distillery must be produced by the applicant. So again, just clarifying the language so that it wouldn't preclude, um.
Now, is that correct though, if you're saying, even if you're saying winery, cider mill, microbrewery, or distillery? But you're not saying, uh, agribusiness or, you know, does that mean that, um, it's only limiting to those, you know, these, the ones that are listed, and then agribusiness would not have to do that?
Yeah, well, let's take a look, tell, why not, um, let's make sure the language is correct. What is your intent? That you would have to produce the wine or beer?
Well, that was the.
In order to sell wine or beer in that kitchen, is that correct?
The intent of all, yeah, all these value added, it's, you know, fifty percent by the operator, um, you know, we're not looking to open bars.
Yep.
We're looking to, um, you know, you've got a, you've got an agriculture operation, you're producing something, and, you know, you should be able to, you know, to sell that.
Okay, so the intent of the language, and, and we'll take a look at this one more time, was not to allow somebody who produces, you know, um, grapes but doesn't actually make wine to then have a kitchen and then sell wine from off-site.
Right.
So, so that, we'll, we'll want to clear that up, that's the intent of the language.
Okay, Joe, you have a comment?
I do, it's, but the title is under sixteen point four two, a bona fide agricultural operation. That's the heading.
Right.
Right.
Including the number two.
So that's understood.
Right, yeah, um, sixteen forty-two A says bona fide agricultural operations.
Hello?
So, alcoholic beverages.
Hello?
Have you got another caller on the line here? Okay, so, um, this, this is a.
Hey, I would just like to say, Trillian Farm Events, let's go, this is amazing for Amada, let's do this shit. Thank you guys, I appreciate your time, good night.
Okay, good night. This is a planning commission discussion at this point. Okay, so we're under year-round kitchens, and so, what is, the intent on number four is to?
To, to only allow alcohol, alcoholic sales at retail in this year-round kitchen for a use where alcohol is actually being produced.
Right.
They can sell what they produce, that's the point.
Right.
Yeah.
Not just get a whole line of alcohol, then, that's a different.
Right, so it's not, not another party store.
Yeah.
Right, okay.
So then, what, the way that we could, we could, you know, alcoholic beverage sold at retail shall only be allowed, um.
I think it's fine how it is, must be produced by the operator, I mean, it's pretty clear.
But no, but it says, sold at retail at any winery, cider, or microbrewery, or distillery, so if you're not one of those four things, does that mean you can sell alcoholic beverages at retail?
Right, I, I see that, I see that.
If you have an alcohol license.
I mean, if you're just, if you're just, if you're just, uh, if you're not one of those, one of those, uh, five things there.
All right.
Does it mean that you can sell, cause you're not one of those five?
Yeah, so I'll make it a three-word to make it clear that, um, it's, it can only be allowed if, um, the operation, agricultural operation includes the actual manufacture of wine or beer or.
Okay.
So would that limit then if, that they could not serve any alcoholic beverages? If they're not selling it, it's, cause this says retail.
Yes, the way, I believe that's the way the language is currently written, correct? It, it, it only allows for alcoholic beverage sold at retail to be ones that are produced by the.
Produced, producing it.
Yeah.
That was, that was the intent of the ordinance.
And so we just want to make sure that this language is clear, that we're not changing that, we want to make it, have it continue to be that way.
Right.
Yeah, okay.
I got one question.
Remove any.
Okay, Jeff.
So what if you produce the food in the kitchen, can you buy alcohol to go with food? Cause if you make the beer, you have food to go with beer.
But if you make the food, you can't buy the beer to. But, if you make the food, you can't buy the beer to go with the food, is that what you're asking?
Correct, that's the way that this, this is written currently, and not proposed to change.
Get a different licensing body.
So, if I use my beef, can I buy beer to serve with my beef, opposed to making cider?
According to this, this is, this is only if you're producing it.
Right.
And so, if you were a brewery, yes.
Microbrew.
A microbrewery, you could definitely serve your microbrew.
So, we, in a sense, then, we're promoting, once again, we're promoting the manufacturing of alcohol.
Well.
On farms, if they want to make it.
It's a product that you can produce with, I mean, if you look at the winery, winery we have in the township in Ray, it's a awesome stuff, but it's, it's in a vineyard, though. It's not just somebody selling wine, it's somebody producing wine, yeah.
Right, and, and food.
And they serve pizzas, and obviously, they don't have any ingredients from the pizzas, but they're, they have, they can make the pizzas to go with the wine, because you always want to have a food service available if you're producing alcoholic beverages, you know the comment, Jeff?
So, the, so the AG district for an event can buy the booze, or hire somebody with the booze, or get a license to serve it during the event?
Yes.
But you, but somebody in SAA can't have beer to serve it in the restaurant?
It's a different license.
Yeah, that.
We don't make that rule.
Now, when it comes to events, there's probably, there's going to be an option to serve.
Yes, for a special outdoor event in the SAA, that's correct. But, what we're talking about here specifically is for a year-round kitchen within the SAA overlay district.
Yeah, and this, and it, it says tasting rooms, and that was, when it was written, the intent was, you're producing alcohol, you should be able to serve food along with it. And that's, you know, now it's, it's getting stretched a little bit from the original intent, but that was specifically what that, that ordinance was, was for.
How do you monitor what is actually being produced with that farm?
How do you monitor?
What was that?
There's a GAMS process that we're using.
If they're following GAMS, and the, the state takes care of that, if it's the.
GAMS does not, that is not GAMS.
This is not GAMS, it's true, but in far as enforcement goes, it, the township is, uh, usually, is complaint-driven, you know, there's a code enforcer, it's not the planning commission's job to do that, but the township enforces. Okay, so, um, so this year-round kitchen with seating tasting room, like I said, the, the, the intent was that these, uh, people that produce, able to produce, um, some type of alcoholic beverage had the tasting room, so, um, and have this, this year-round kitchen available to them. So, we're just cleaning up the language right now.
Yep, that's A four.
Okay. Monica?
Yeah, um, okay, so, if I have an indoor kitchen that I can use on year-long, I have a barn, I can have a fence in that barn. I can make sure that anybody that wants to come to my facility, they're gonna have a baby shower, or whatever, they're gonna use my facility. I have like a license that I can't use because I'm not manufacturing the product, but I can have them bring in their own beer, wine.
Well, you're getting, it's a different section of the ordinance, this is a year-round kitchen tasting room, you're talking about an event, uh, that's like a banquet center.
Someone that has a liquor.
So, that's not this exact ordinance, this is year-round kitchen tasting room.
So, okay, so let's go get to the, the event barns, the event facility, that it was, they were going to have to be manufacturing the product there, whether it's the bourbon, I can look at, I'm going back to food now. So, I have a, an indoor kitchen, I can use year-round, but I can go to Gordon's and buy frozen bagels and sell them, I can buy pizza and sell them, there's it's like, we're having commercial businesses throughout the township, we're not getting a tax base from it, they're paying egg tax. What can we do, let's ask the planner, what can we do to kind of make it beneficial for all the taxpayers? And for the businesses to be able to use their facilities? What can we, how can we make this work?
That is what we are trying to do, come up with some more categories for kitchens, and, because it's not addressed very well in the ordinance, year-round kitchens, and.
Right.
We do have people that have commercial kitchens that, you know, we're trying to find a fit for this, so that's, but, if you can explain it better.
You know, it, it, it's, it's complicated because we have so many different use types, we're, you know, what we're just talking about is the year-round kitchen, I think what I heard you mention was the event barn.
Right.
So, the event barn, uh, within the agricultural district could be allowed, uh, and a seasonal kitchen could be, uh, could occur, associated with that, with particular events, right?
Associated with their agricultural.
And, there's no limitation on you having to produce alcohol on the premise in order to have a seasonal kitchen, uh, or serve alcohol during the, associated with those events, so.
And, and I believe we were.
So, you can serve it, but you can't sell?
Well, yeah, it's not retail sales, obviously, yeah, yeah.
If you're having an event.
Right.
Right.
But you can set, like, it could be a cash bar, it, can, could it be a cash bar, can you make that? Like, right, if you're having an event, and maybe the event doesn't, like, you don't want to.
Yeah, I. The ordinance doesn't say one way or the other in that regard, it's not.
It's me a cash bar selling it.
Right.
Yeah, but it's also different than retail, retail sales, it's, you know, it's a different, different license and a type, so.
Yeah.
Oh, no, I get that, but I'm, yeah.
So, that's a whole nother thing, I mean, the, the alcohol, there's, there's different types of licenses.
Sure, yeah.
I mean, and I, there's, there's, what, the ability to sell at an event.
There's a caterer's license, right?
Yeah, and then there's, retail is just taking it out of a cooler and, and, and selling it.
Yeah, so, what we're talking about for an event barn, and a seasonal kitchen that may, may be allowed during a special event, would be a caterer's license. And they're allowed to do what they're allowed to do under that license, we're not talking about, you know, class C liquor license, right, for retail sales.
Right, we were just, I mean, our, our focus here was to try and allow, um, to have different types of food services available.
Correct, and, and to categorize them appropriately, the seasonal, which could be allowed in the AG versus the year-round, which we would consider in the SAA overlay, right? Versus a restaurant.
Right.
Which would be in the commercial district, or a, a liquor store, which would be in the commercial district.
Okay. So, that, this basically is just a cleanup of sixteen forty-two, which is our year-round kitchen tasting rooms.
In the SAA.
And that's, uh, only available SAA.
And we were just making the AG barns more accessible for the citizens, for seasonally.
For the event, event barns, that's something that was not previously allowed, and so we're opening it up to potentially allow that, in the AG district.
So, it's ten acres for the AG district, event barns, the outdoor events are thirty, if you have a barn.
I just wondered how you guys come up with this one, so, the outdoor and, um, that's what I'm thinking.
There's criteria from the plan, the plan and stuff, a lot of criteria.
Lots of, lots of homework.
So, I have, based on, we've gone, we've gotten through the draft here, um, I'm open, and I'm ready to take any additional notes that you may have. At this point, I have two notes. The first one would be on page eight, number A four, to clean up that language, just, just make it sure, make, make it very clear that this doesn't open the door to allow for sales of wine or beer associated with the year-round kitchen tasting room that isn't being produced onsite. So, we'll clean that up, that's the first item I had.
Okay.
And then the second one is on page nine, under item A one, talking about the event barns, when we say only existing farm buildings uh, existing at the time the amendment took effect, this amendment takes effect, so we'll.
Right.
Put a date stamp on it essentially, to prevent somebody doing what Joe suggested they could easily do.
Okay, that's fair to me.
The, the whole thrust of this is to help our existing farms and not open us up to, um, a commercial operation to skirt out around the entire ordinance into a purely commercial operation in, in the AG district. Do we feel that we have a, so, just to review, as far as, as far as kitchen facilities go, we, well, we, we did add this, the AG, the event bar, which is, which is a, a use that is available as a special land use in the, um, AG district. It says you can do seasonal kitchen facilities, which we did add that definition. We were talking about possibly having, like, a counter service, maybe a couple of different types of, uh, food service, um, do we feel like we need, and then we also.
Would that not fit under the definition of seasonal kitchen?
I guess it fits under seasonal kitchen.
Yeah, I guess in looking at, what, I, I remember you made that comment, um, DJ, and I wa, I thought as I read this definition for seasonal kitchen, I felt that this would cover essentially what you'd get at a counter serve, correct?
Yeah, I guess it, I guess it pretty much does. What about?
We're just not calling it a counter serve.
What, what about, uh, just, you know, talk about food service, I mean, we've got commercial kitchens that, uh, can produce food. We don't really address that kind of operation.
Uh, could you say that again, what do you mean by that?
Well, we have commercial kitchens that can make food, say, they make bread, and they place some bread somewhere, I mean, that, um, I don't know where that is addressed in the, in the zoning arts, where you have a commercial kitchen, and you're, you're not making, you're not growing wheat to make the bread, but you have a kitchen, and you're, you're, you're baking bread, and, you know, putting it on a truck and selling it at stores or whatever, we don't really have, it's.
We do, um, we do have sixteen point four one manufacture of, of, no, no, that's beverages, I'm sorry.
That's beverages, yeah.
So, we don't have, it's something where you can produce food in, in a kitchen.
And sell it somewhere else.
Anywhere, AG district.
I, I don't know where that's covered.
The bakeries for selling goods containing, but if it's, you have to be.
That's, yeah, that's bakeries, but that's just grown by fifty percent by the operator, what if someone has a kitchen, and they're just baking.
They're just using, they're, right, now using fifty percent.
I'm wondering.
They're making bread, they're growing the wheat.
How does? I think maybe we talked about that at the last planning commission meeting, and I think my question was, how does that? Why, why, if it's not associated with a farm? Why would you allow that in the AG district and not in the residential district, or, uh, I'm just, like, you know?
Just because of the.
Any one of us here, if, if we're farmers or not, or an AG, or, or residential, then in theory could, you know, start baking and selling
It's, it's come up, and, yeah.
Out of our, out of our garage, or something like that, so I guess that's.
Right, and that's what comes to my mind, is like, somebody that's got a commercial kitchen, say, I don't know, whatever, in their whatever business, and they have a commercial kitchen, they're not using it for their own use of their business, but they have, they know somebody who produces bread, or makes jams, or I don't know, whatever they do. And I'm, I'm leasing out my commercial kitchen to Suzie, so she can make her bread to sell at wherever she sells them. So, it's not something that I'm selling on my AG property, I'm not using that seasonal kitchen for that commercial kitchen. But I'm renting it to Suzie for X amount of dollars a month, and she's using it and doing whatever she's doing with it.
It's, it's, it's similar, it's similar to the, um, one here where we are allowing people to rent storage inside their barn, you have a AG building, and you can create income with it by s, having indoor storage, well, you've got a commercial kitchen in your AG building, you can rent that out to create additional income for the farm, even though, I, I, I don't think there's anything in this ordinance that allows that, that's.
I would agree, I don't think there's anything in your ordinance currently that allows that.
We want to think about, Eddie?
That's, I'm.
Yeah, you want to add that?
I know, I think we need a little bit more than what we have, this is a very good start, and I think what you've got here is, is very good, but we're still, we're still, I think we're still lacking a few things.
Okay. Want to speak it some more?
So, another workshop or more discussion?
Well, the planner's gonna whip something up fantastic, here.
If you want me to, I, I, I.
To add a commercial kitchen.
I serve you at your pleasure, and if, if the planning commission believes that that is something that you want me to add language, that you can consider it, I'll be glad to do that.
So, that most likely would fit in the, uh, our existing permitted uses? Well, we've got kitchen facilities that'll allow eight months.
I, I, I still tend to go back to, you know, okay, what's the difference between indoor storage of the facilities of a barn versus a commercial kitchen? You know?
Indoor storage, to me, would be like a motorhome, or a camper, or something, and something.
Right, and we're talking low intensity use, right, non-impacting use.
And that's being stored all winter, right.
They show up in the fall, and they show up in the spring.
A commercial kitchen could be a high impacting use.
Or a boat storage, you know, you're storing all winter.
Could be a truck every day.
It could be a truck every day, it could be six employees, I just fear that we're going beyond.
Beyond AG use.
Trying to, I mean, I'm, one hundred, a hundred percent behind what we're doing here to benefit our agricultural property owners, but I feel like that one just is, I'm not connecting with the, what's the link between?
So, they should be looking at, you know, a commercial bakery, and they would.
When we talk about a bakery, do we support them doing a bakery?
Yeah.
Well, we have, we have a bakery in the township, now they have to go commercial.
We're not, we're not, this, this clearly allows farmers who are producing, you know, donuts, or whatever, all right, to be able to sell that kind of a thing here. But I feel like we're taking a little bit of a leap to go.
Making it more commercial than AG.
A commercial kitchen.
Okay.
Eight months in the year.
Joe?
There's actually nothing in the ordinance that states you can't do it either.
If you can't, if it's not indoors, then you can't do it, if it, right.
Well, you're asking if it wasn't.
It's not, it's, it's not, it's not in there, so if it's not in the ordinance, then you're, it's not av, not available.
Right.
So. Okay, so we got a pretty good cleanup here.
If you have a commercial kitchen, you can come in for a, a year-round commercial kitchen, come in for a special, you know, land use.
Right, they would just have to, a commercial kitchen would just have to come in as a.
Commercial district.
Kitchen, have to be, it would be involved with rezoning, and it's a commercial use.
So, the next steps for this is, it's a proposed text amendment, so you would be required to hold a public hearing to hear official public comments on these proposed amendments. And ultimately, after the public hearing, you would make a recommendation, it would go to the township board.
Okay, so we just, we just have minor cleanups on, on this, and it's gonna be ready.
Yeah, this is minor cleanup, we could.
We are being called the thing that lasts, uh, the last one said by the last guy is a little bit shady, I'm not sure, but I hope this thing goes great.
Um, so, yeah, I can easily make these two changes here, um, and I think maybe the next, it's just, are you ready to move forward, how you want to proceed from here, do you want to schedule a public hearing?
Commission feel that, uh, we're close enough to get this, uh, take one more look at a final draft and set a public hearing?
We could set a public hearing, and then, you know, once we get the input from the public, it can always be changed again.
Correct, oh, yeah, absolutely.
That's a good idea, you know?
So, rather than finalizing too much, let's hear what the public has to say.
Um, okay, so we've set a public hearing, we, we set that at a normal, uh, planning commission meeting, which, uh.
So, it would be December.
Would this be?
December fourth.
Ready by December?
And you wa, also want to look at your calendar for January and determine if you're going to change the date of your January meeting.
January, it is January first, that's probably not a good day.
Not a good day, might not be.
Might be a couple headaches at the table.
The board sets our meetings, it used to be the planning commission, but the board does it at their meeting in, in December now?
They normally do, yes, but you. But you give it, it lands on the first station. Given that it's. Could suggest to them, if everybody was available on, on, on the Thursday, or on the following Monday, or something like that.
A week later?
If we set the public hearing for the fourth, we could do it then, and if we don't have a January meeting, we could just skip to February, depending on if we have any site plans.
That's true.
Well, if the planning commission, Adam, you said that, would December be feasible?
Yeah, December fourth would be fine.
Right, I'll make a motion that we set a public hearing for December fourth. For the, um, let's see, text amendments to agribusiness.
And SAA. Do we have to be more specific with the, uh, public notice?
Uh, for setting the public hearing, we'll be more, much more specific with the, with the notice, of course,
Right.
but as far as setting the public hearing,
For the motion.
it's just simply, uh, you can just call it whatever our agenda item is, uh, AG slash SAA zoning amendments.
The new draft will be part of the notice, right?
Um, the way that the notice, it works is it'll, it'll be a summary of the proposed amendment. And then the notice will say that they can go to the township to, uh, get a copy and in- inspect the proposal.
Be all legal. Okay, so Beth made the motion.
I'll second that motion.
Steve, second, so we will have a, a draft, uh, for a public hearing, take public comments on the December fourth meeting at our regular meeting. All the favors say aye.
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 All opposed, motion carries.
I can give one real quick question before we move on to the next agenda item. He, he's aligning, he's put the new event barns under sixteen dot forty-six, but I thought that all of the amendments under section sixteen were specifically for the SAA. And I don't have my book in front of me, so I'm not-
No, the event barns is under eight oh one.
Eight, yeah, we put from eight to sixteen.
No, but he's got it, he's got it under section sixteen.
Article sixteen.
Or article sixteen, not article eight.
So you believe that article sixteen is only for SAA district uses?
Yeah, yeah. I think so.
Okay, I'll make a note and we can take a look.
Right, because we were trying to do event barns in the ag business.
Sixteen is all of our special land uses.
Is it?
Yes. Sixteen starts with, uh, review standards, goes through cemeteries, the whole lot, all the way through, so, yeah, it can be.
All through cemeteries, I don't know.
Okay, all right.
Oh, yes, yeah, okay.
All right, thank you.
It can be in there. Okay.
To double check.
All right, let's put that away, and we've got, next on our agenda is, um, the site plan for Trillium. Um, there was a couple deficiencies in the site plan and we did receive an updated copy. And let's just open that up.
Got mine today. Mine wasn't in the packet.
You, you, I'm sorry, you don't have one?
She doesn't have, I do now, but I didn't have one in the packet.
Okay, um, planner, did, did you review, uh, it's dated September twenty-fifth, is your review that you-
Yeah, so my review letter, uh, was on the previously submitted site plan dated September twenty-fifth, but we included that in the packet, uh, for this time around. The applicant has provided a revised site plan uh, that is in your packet, that, that's dated ten, October ninth is the date on that revised site plan. And, um, so I did go back and look at all of my items in the September twenty-fifth letter to verify whether these items have been added to the revised site plan. Or going back to the motion that you had made from last month, as you recall, there were a handful of items that you said could be waived. So if you're looking at my site plan review letter, page two, uh, under site plan information, uh, the first bullet was existing improvements within two hundred feet of the subject site, that was something that you waived last month. Uh, topography at two-foot contours, uh, that was something you also waived, waived, but it was associated with, what does the Macomb County Public Works Office require as far as stormwater? And if they would require stormwater, then yes, we would need topography. Uh, but the Public Works Office has provided that correspondence to you indicating that it is, it does not qualify or does not trigger review by their office or compliance with their standards. So in that sense, uh, I agree that this can be waived, the topography.
So it, I hate to interrupt, but the letter from the commission, from the commissioner, prior to engineering design submission, it is advisable that the design consultant schedule an engineering meeting with this office, so, to discuss how our standards may apply.
Yeah.
So that's kind of wide open, that it's not really, they're not saying one way or the other, that yes, it's okay, or not, that's, well, with the paragraph above that.
Yeah, they are saying that, this is, if, I can't speak for them, but I believe what they're saying is, but if you change anything, just come and talk to us, and they're trying to keep up the, the communication here, just to make sure. Uh, and so the way that I read that last paragraph is, um, double check, uh, one more time with us, please. That, that's, that's how I read it, but the paragraph, yeah, the third paragraph in that letter is clear that they're saying that, at least as the site plan currently appears, it is, the project is not required to meet our standards.
So they're saying yes, but they're still not signing off, everybody's covering it.
They just don't wanna-
They don't, there's, see, it, it's tricky because there's nothing for them to sign off on, they don't, they see this plan, they say it does not require our review or sign off. But they encourage you to keep the communication and reach out to us again, uh, before this moves, you know, further.
That's why last meeting, we wanted it in some kind of writing other than-
This is all that we're gonna get in the public comment, so they're not gonna sign off on this because they're not required to.
Yeah, and that's more we have, it's more than what the applicant had.
Yeah.
Um, second paragraph, I mean, the language for the stormwater discharge, that must be if there are drains installed at, at the parking lot?
Correct.
Okay, and, and a closed drain.
A closed drain, what do you mean?
Correct, if it, basically an outlet to their, to their drain.
A crack with a drain and-
Rain for a drain.
Yeah, there is.
Correct, any, any outlet, structure, outlet, that connects with the north, the drain.
Surface drainage.
Well, this is, yeah, so surface drainage, which is what, what's proposed on this site is essentially sheet drainage. Uh, there's no swales, there's no open or enclosed infrastructure proposed.
Right, if it rains, it, everything goes in river anyways.
Yeah, so no, there will be no connection or discharge to the drain. Or at least there is no, nothing proposed on this plan. Um, the third bullet is architectural building elevations, and that was something that we had talked about at the last meeting, you know, this is an existing barn. Uh, I think she even provided photos, and so I don't, I didn't see that in the minutes, but I think we generally agreed, that's okay, we're, we're not in need of those. The type of surface material and design of all exterior surfaces, I was really talking about like, you know, other areas of the site not involved with this particular operation. And again, I don't, I didn't, there was no discussion at the planning commission level last month saying that this is something that was needed. Dimension floor plans, um, we, we had those and essentially it was just, the barn is open and it's gonna be,
That's big.
it's gonna shift based on the needs of the vendor. Signage details, uh, they did provide additional details on their revised site plan with regard to the sign.
Right.
Including dimensions and height.
But it does not say that, um, indicating that a permit is required.
Yeah, I, I-
They, they basically have to come to get us-
Yeah.
permit, a, a review of the sign when they designed the sign. It just has a six to one with ratio.
Right. Yeah, I also did not see a note saying that a permit from the township will be required for the sign.
May I interject though? It was my understanding that a permit is required for any sign, so it's a better guess.
Yeah, so, so what we're, what- Yeah, so what we're trying to, um, prevent is that, if we approve this site plan, we don't want it to seem as if we're approving that sign.
Right.
Because we don't have the power to do that.
We got caught up in this last meeting and I thought that we kind of made the conclusion in the minutes that no matter how many times we go round and round, I still need to get a permit for a, for a sign. That if I were to put a sign up there without a permit, I'd be in violation. And when I talked to the, my, I guess, I don't know what they are, civil engineer, you know, I, I said we got caught on this sign thing and I know we're showing where we'd like it to be, you know, sort of in the middle of the courtyard, we had that on the initial site plan that we went over last time. And I said maybe what we need to do is, you know, orient it a specific way and let them see what we're thinking of, but I know that we do need a permit for it, so anything that requires a permit where we're relying on the township ordinance is beyond the site plan, sort of like the, the parking lot, right? We're not just gonna go put in a parking lot without getting a permit.
I think we can clear this, if we just write on this that permit is required, that would ta-
It's all we need.
So all we gotta do is write it on, write it on there, 'cause it's, it's not you, it, it just happened before where a sign was shown and it thought it was approved, 'cause there were no notes on it, so.
And I won't need full copies of that.
But you, but when you, you go for the sign, you will have to show the sign, and, you know, there's requirements, so.
I'm, I'm perfectly aware and happy to do it.
So if you have the official copy, if you just write permit required on there, then we, we know, they won't, they won't slip by. That's, that's all we're just trying, you know, we don't want to, it just survives a lot of change in the office and stuff, so.
Uh, the next item was information about the presence of wetlands and floodplains. There's nothing triggered from like the national wetlands inventory that there are. Um, I still didn't see a note on the plan to that effect, but this again could be something that, that's waived. Based on my review, where this proposed facility is located, in the parking area, um, there are no known wetlands or floodplains.
Right.
So I, I, I've got the ones that I saw, it's the temporary tent height, and that was addressed on the-
Yep, um-
Max thirty-five.
Yeah, the temporary tent height that was written in to the revised plan. The, um, we had talked about the pathways, the planning commission-
It's the driveway.
Yeah, oh, skip, skip dri- the driveway, oh, number three.
So this is where we wanted something in writing, we did receive from Macomb County Department of Roads. Looking at the information below, the MCDR does not have any objection to the ingress, egress to that venue from thirty-two mile road, so.
What information below are they talking about? Because it doesn't show it on this letter. And we have, um, the report back from May where the county had stated, I mean, we discussed Trillium Farm event venue. Um, this was a, a meeting that John and Chris went to. The MCDR would require a de-acceleration lane and an eastbound bypass to enter the property from thirty-two mile road. They would also not allow use of the current drive that is approximately ten feet from Riverbend Lane or the drive that is just east of the bridge for the venue traffic. They did state the county has no jurisdiction over Riverbend Lane and suggested that the owner might contact the Riverbend Association to develop an agreement to use the Riverbend Lane.
But the date, the date on that is, this is, this is October tenth.
I know, but what, what is it, what is he referring to?
So that, that, we had no site plan.
Right.
It was a general discussion looking at overhead maps of the area. They hadn't even submitted their site plan yet.
Okay, that's fine, but I, I just, I guess I want to know, what, what are they talking about, looking at the information below?
They had the information below.
What is their information below?
They were looking at, it was a reply to a send of this document.
Okay.
Well, it should say, state that.
Well, yeah, but we-
Because what information?
I think we're lucky to get this.
Right, but, yeah, because we're not responsible for the way the Macomb County Road Commission writes their letters, because we don't-
Well, I know, but are you gonna accept this when you don't know what information they're talking about?
Well, it-
We could ask the applicant, in what context was that email sent?
Want me to tell you?
Yes, please.
Um, I, I contacted my attorney at Kirkland Hoof, and he reached out to the road commission on our behalf. I believe, it's my understanding that they had a conversation along with an email that's attorney-client privileged that I did not provide. And part of that was a, uh, I don't know if it was a screenshot or a small shot of the site plan that I had submitted to the township, and it came back with, um, some more personal information, a conversation between my attorney and the road commissioner himself, and that, and, in reference to what he had received, and then he had no objection to what we were doing. And in keeping, keeping in mind that the road commission said we couldn't use the easternmost driveway or the westernmost driveway, um, my attorney proposed that we use our center driveway, which, right.
Pardon me, the horseshoe, I saw that, yeah.
We used the center driveway, which they had no objection to at the initial review, looking at the Google Maps, I guess, is what they did. So that's what that's in reference to. I believe he was looking at, it's my understanding, he was looking at a screenshot of the site plan.
But you understand where I'm coming from.
I, I do understand, I, but I also know that to me that was like gold.
Right, because you know-
He did that with the road commissioner himself signing off on it with no objection to Trillium Farm. I was, I wasn't gonna question what he-
When I look at it, to me, it looks like he's looking at something in his head that didn't come out. And if it was attorney-client privilege, he's not going to say that. The fact, the fact that it states the ingress, egress of a thirty-two mile road, I think we're, I think we're covering it. Right, I mean, I, he's- Yeah, I think so too, I think we're, we're trying to-
And Beth, the, the road commissioner who signed off on this was not at the meeting that was held with John. That, that was, it, it was a side conversation during a much larger discussion about general armeida township road issues. And this just came up as a side conversation during that.
So they, they just threw everything on the table at that meeting that didn't really apply.
Now, these are the things that, that we're aware of that may be coming up in the next six months, and that's where that came in.
Well, I just, I, I guess I, I have concerns a little bit as to traffic getting backed up, I was backed up in traffic.
Well, and, and I'll tell you, the road commissioner doesn't have concerns, and it's happening once a week on a Saturday afternoon when people are coming in with people trickling out from probably eight-thirty to nine o'clock at night, you know, a few cars at a time, so it's really about as low impactful as it can be.
Right.
You know, with thirty-two mile road backs up the Romeo playing anyway. I mean, usually when that light is red, you know, traffic is stopped in front of the farm anyway.
Right.
You know, it's not, it's really not any kind of a-
I wave when I'm married.
It's trying, trying to get, get out sometimes, it's, you know, but I didn't turn left, it's, it's, it's difficult
Oh, yeah, I just want to make a love dog there.
because it's just completely backed up, so, you know, and it is on a Saturday most typically, and it is, like I said, people start leaving at eight-thirty, forty to nine, nine o'clock, it's people out.
I think it, it was, you know, something starts at five o'clock and everyone's getting there at that time.
Right.
And I think that's probably what had happened, but.
Well, just from my wedding and my few friends that have gotten married here, we've had people get there as early, like two hours, we couldn't believe it. It is pretty spread out, year by year times.
Cover most people.
It's like a little, the twenty minutes of the week, you know, more people are coming, but for the most part, it is kind of, everyone's trickling in one or two at a time. It's actually kind of annoying, like what are you doing there two hours early?
I know, we're not ready for you.
Put them to work.
I think, I think that this is gonna fit, fill the requirement, this.
Yeah, I totally agree, we were grasping at straws.
They definitely went the distance to get that.
What is our, what do you think, Adam?
Uh, I believe that the road commission, um, that letter was referenced to this particular site plan, and they are not gonna require a permit nor- and they are not gonna require a permit nor any improvements, um, for that driveway.
Okay. Okay, uh, next thing.
The items, uh, pathways and screening were both waived, were not deemed a concern of the planning commission last month. And then the last items, lighting, the trash receptacle, and the loading, all of those have been corrected on the updated site plan. So, uh, there's lighting notes saying that it'll be directed downward and shielded. The trash receptacle information, so the concrete pad, the bollards on the inside, and then the loading, an unloading area, one is now shown on the plan, so.
So, everything, everything is.
So everything is, is checked out with that note about the sign permit being required from the township, and then with the road commission sign off on the driveway.
Okay, so, um, if they've met all the requirements for their site plan, the action for the planning commission is just to, um, approve the, the site plan dated, um, ten-nine-twenty-four?
That is.
With, with the, that they noted, uh, sign permit required?
That is correct, and just as a refresher, this was, um, the special land use already received approval.
Correct. And the, the board has already approved this subject to this final site plan.
Correct.
So this would be their, their last hurdle.
This is the last step in the, in the approval process.
Okay. Okay, um, someone here to make the motion to approve the final site plan for, um, one-six-nine-one.
I'll make the motion.
I'll make the motion, I'll approve the final site plan on.
Okay.
Preliminary site plan for one-six, one-nine-one, thirty-two mile road.
All right, so this is, uh, approved, the, the final site plan.
And to include the sign permit notice.
Right.
Now, second that.
Well, I think Sarah was way better.
Oh, okay, I heard something.
Okay, so, a motion by Maureen, by Sarah, and it's to, uh, approve the final site plan with the note, uh, the, uh, permit required for the sign, uh, for the Trillium Farm. Chris, do you have other, other details on that?
Yes.
Adam, do we, do we have everything covered?
I believe so, yes.
Motion.
Um, we have a, oh, I don't have the parts like this.
We can get that.
Okay, okay, any, any questions or discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carried.
Well, thank you very much. Yes, it's been a long, long journey.
Yes.
Well, the season, season's probably over for you now.
The road commission thing, the road commission thing was, I, really, I just didn't think I was good on it, you know.
Is your season over now, or you've got anything to turn over?
Well, we have one address we spread, and I think people here from the township are gonna be there this weekend. So, we tried to talk to them, I was a year and a half ago, like, November?
No heat.
You know, what are you doing?
Dress warm.
April and November.
Well, this weekend is actually supposed to be nice, so.
Yeah, I know, um, because, I feel like, yeah. Because, you know.
Yeah, you never, you don't know, um.
When you don't have heat.
Right, and you, I mean, there are those, those rental things, but again, that adds cost to the bride and groom's.
Well, when it comes to the heaters?
Yeah.
Yeah, no, not the barn, heaters in the barns. It's, it terrifies me.
It would meet also, but.
So if you buy the barn with a cigar, I take a squirt gun. I know, like, they're two hundred years old, get away.
Get those kids sharpshooter ones.
We have to smoke, go somewhere else. Well, I, I appreciate all the time and effort, and we will be submitting our engineering plans, you know, for all of the improvements and meeting the, uh, criteria for safety, et cetera, for Kevin and the architect. So, and I have a ninety-six-year-old aunt who is actually in the hospital, so we're gonna leave.
Okay.
Thank you.
So, I wanna go with her, she's.
Thank you.
It's right, I'm sorry to hear that.
She doesn't have anybody but us, so.
Okay.
If she thinks she's in.
Okay, take care, ladies.
Okay, next on our agenda, um, is the special land use for, um, two-two-nine-hundred-and-nine-twenty Armada Center Road. The special land use being proposed was the, um, self-storage. Last month, um, it looks like all the requirements were met, except we had, um, standard six. Proposed use is necessary for the public convenience at the proposed location, and we did ask for the, um, the market study to show the, um, the demand for their, for the use. And we did receive that from applicant. Kind of summing it all up on page thirty-four, um, it does say, um, the demand numbers and anecdotal occupancy levels would suggest that there is likely at least a modest amount of unmet demand within the six-point-two-five-mile demographic profile of the subject site, and that is more than likely that this subject market is undersupplied. Did everybody get a chance, this fairly lengthy report to go through? But, um, it does show that there's like a moderate demand for, um, for the mini storage, so that this, um, would be for the public convenience. So, um, Adam, does it feel like that, uh, would meet the finding of fact, that showed the evidence of demand for that?
Yes, yeah, I don't, there's not much more that we, that we can ask for, other than, you know, have they done their due diligence? And, uh, they in fact have, and this report, um, provides them what they need ultimately. They're taking a risk, right, that the market is, you know, that this report is, is correct. But this is the best we, we have at our availability.
Okay, so, um, this is, this is a special land use, we've gone through the seven standards to make sure that the applicant did meet the law. Um, so, uh, being a special land use, the planning commission having held the public hearing and examined all the findings of fact, um, at this point, it, um, it's up to us to make a recommendation to the township board. And from what we've discussed, it would seem that a motion would be in order to recommend the, um, special land use for the, um, self-storage at this address, would that be a correct, uh, motion? Do we need to add anything else to that?
DJ, I just did wanna mention, I didn't get a chance to look at this one, is it any different, um, Andrew, than what we saw a month ago?
That's the same one that was online?
Same one.
Yeah, it's, it's what I, it was what I emailed.
I didn't, I didn't, I didn't see, uh, the creekside storage, just the side of the airport in Romeo?
That's not in Armada though.
Was there a radius?
Six, six and a quarter miles, yeah.
Six point five miles.
Okay, well, we're kinda, sorta centered in the township, township's six by six, gotta be close. Anyways, I did call them, just out of curiosity, I stated my purpose, and they verbally said, we're, uh, we're about fifty percent capacity. And that's their indoor. So I just wanted to mention that, there is, seems to be, that was left out of the market study.
Uh, I'm sorry, uh, creekside is which one again?
It's just the side of the airport, actually across the street from Chil- Trillium, almost.
Right, really big.
Oh, okay, that's, oh, that's back behind like the, the.
Yeah, you can't really see it.
Okay, thank you.
One thing I, and I didn't call there, but I'm thinking like, people may wanna, I mean, it's not far from home, but if it's something that's more in the backyard, it'd be more easily accessible for someone to just go to Armada Center than to go to thirty-two in Romeo Plain.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, I, in, I don't know, I mean, everybody's different or whatever. I see a lot of them and I, um, in my travels, everywhere, you know, but specifically this time of year, like, we've been, I've spent a lot of time in Romeo and Tilson Street and whatever with the grandkids. And all those people have small homes in the middle of town, and I don't, they have elaborate displays and where the heck do they put them? And that, this is probably a, a very real, or where they keep a lot of their stuff, or, you know, I mean, so. And that's just obviously one circumstance that came to my mind of, you know, but I.
Multiple uses.
Oh, absolutely, I know my daughter and son-in-law, you know, use them often, also, I, it's just, there's a lot of different reasons to use it, it's not just one specific thing that you don't keep handy all the time or whatever.
Okay.
So, were there any restrictions that were discussed last month that you, that you want, you wanted to place on this, uh, special land use?
Uh, I will speak to, there were, there are use standards for self-storage facilities, we did discuss those restrictions. The applicant acknowledged those restrictions, uh, and is aware. Ultimately, the site plan still has to be reviewed and approved.
So I've got to continue the whole site plan.
And on the, on, on the review, on the revised site plan that I have in front of me, they, they acknowledge and list those restrictions, and essentially that they're going to comply. Uh, so in that sense, I, I like that, I think that's a, a clean way to do it, so that they're essentially acknowledging.
On the site plan.
So again, you know, no storage, can't run a business out of the units, uh, no outside storage of hazardous materials, that kind of thing.
So, in, in the motion to, to the board, to rec, um, do we need to include anything other than just our recommendation?
No, no, you don't. You don't, there, there are ordinance requirements, so they have to comply, and I just like that on the site plan, they're acknowledging that. So as far as the special land use recommendation, you don't even have to reference those.
Okay, so.
May I ask a question?
Sure, Rob.
So we have the property just to the west of what will be the storage area. What kind of requirements are there for fencing between the property, um, what is, you know, currently our property and, uh, what will be the storage area?
Do you want to answer that one?
Um, there is, there are ordinance requirements for greenbelt areas. Uh, I don't think a fencing is specifically required, but on the latest site plan that we have in front of us, they are proposing a fence that would completely surround, uh, it'd be very close to the limits of the parking area, so not around the property boundary, the fence won't be on the property boundary, it'll be around the perimeter of the, of the development, of, of the area that will be parking or storage. And then beyond the fence would be the greenbelt area that they're proposing to, um, maintain.
I kind of assumed there would be a, uh, some sort of fence, but I just wanted to make sure. Anybody on that property is maybe, you know, going between.
Correct.
That area and.
Yeah.
Our property.
Right.
Yeah, and maybe the applicant can speak to the height and material, it looks like six-foot-high fence.
Which is the limit for that area.
Yeah, so six-foot-tall fence, and it's, there's only one gate at the entrance by the road. So, once a user of the site is in the site, uh, they'd have to hop the fence in order to, you know.
Here's a picture and example of fence from front gate being proposed.
And, and, and this, this type of site, since it's boarding or different type of zoning, the screening would have to be kept right up to the, uh, full requirement.
Oh, okay. So it's something like that, that's.
Correct.
This, this picture, take the picture that's on there, is it something like that?
It would be something very similar to that, correct, that'd be the front gate, it's your property that just wants to know.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Then, then of course, it will be screened with the greenbelt, you won't be just looking at the fence.
Correct.
Okay, so, um, do we have anyone to make the motion to the, recommend to the township board, the special land use?
Can we talk about the greenbelt for screening?
Well, the green, I mean, that's more of a site plan issue, but, I mean, we're just looking at the special land use for the, for the use. I mean, this, this, we're not actually reviewing the site plan this evening, it did come in too late, and the planner has not reviewed that. We're not approving this at all, we're just recommending this, the, um, special land use for the mini storage, um, to the township board at this point.
Well, I, I'll make the motion to recommend to the township board, um.
Specials.
The special land use for two-two-nine-two-hundred and two-two-nine-two-oh Armada Center Road.
Okay, I'll second that, to recommend the special land use to the township board for the.
Contingent and full-site plan approval?
Yes.
I think that makes sense.
You want that in there? Okay, I'll, I'll, I'll agree to your, your amended motion for the.
Okay, thanks.
Did the applicant, did you have something that you wanted to say, or were you?
No, I'm here to answer questions.
Okay, Chris, you wanna read back that new and improved motion?
I have a motion to recommend approval of the SLU for public storage facility for, uh, two-two-nine-zero-zero and two-two-nine-two-zero Armada Center contingent and, uh, full-site plan approval.
Any questions or discussion on the motion, and you've got, uh, Sarah and myself? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed?
Aye.
Okay.
Aye.
So, oh, okay, wait a minute, so.
Is it two opposed?
Yes.
And there's three.
It's three.
Um, there was three that said, yes, three, yes, there was two not.
We need, we need, we need four, we're seven, we're a seven-member commission, we need four.
This is our quorum?
No, this is a quorum, um, that's a, that's a variance from, that's a ZBA, uh, where you need a majority of the members. Uh, in this case, it's a simple majority of the members present.
Oh, the motion, motion passes, thank you. Okay, so we've got, uh, Arnold, uh, who?
So Andy, this will be on next week's, um, township board agenda.
All right, this is the board next Wednesday. Uh, that was, um, the last item of business, correct? So that brings us up to our last public comment, for those of you that stuck it out. No, everybody looks happy, smiles.
Nine oh six.
I know why you're happy.
Oh, they're shocked.
Not 'cause of us.
That's great.
Okay, uh, it is now, uh, nine oh seven, uh, entertaining a motion to adjourn.
Submit a motion to adjourn at nine oh seven?
I'll second that.
Arnold, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Once again, I just wanna say thank you, Chris, for being here.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Yes, thank you.